...endorsement interviews 2019 on Kevin Child, the moderator. Just to let you know that we have invited all candidates to this forum. So they all have a chance to respond and as we see, we have many candidates today. And this will be the Boulder City Council. I guess there will be two people that will be elected out of this category. So what I'm going to do is open it up to the candidates and listeners. Again, you get one minute to say your buyer or who you are with the people, okay?
Sorry. I'm Judy Gishain. I was born and raised in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Lived in Phoenix for about thirty years in mountain of Boulder City. I've been up there for five years. I'm a retired accountant and I have...
In my performance, please.
And I have done a lot of volunteer work with veterans over the years. I'm running for council because I think I am the best qualified. I have attended almost all of the city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and the other organizations or some meetings that they have and anything that involves the city as such for three and a half to four years. I rarely miss any and I do speak out when I feel something is wrong, but I also speak up when they're doing something right and congratulate them for making a good choice. I think I know and have a good handle on the things that are concerning our citizens as I talk to a lot of them and meet them all around Boulder City. We are a real big community, so you do get to know people quite easily, even just at a grocery store or a restaurant that you frequent and things like that. So I think I am, I feel I have the best background and experience for one of the seats. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Claudia Bridges. I'm also running for Boulder City City Council. I was born in California, grew up in Chicago, raised a family in Scottsdale, worked in Sacramento and retired in Boulder City. I have an MBA in finance, I have a PhD in marketing and I'm a retired marketing academic from Sacramento State University. I had the opportunity to live in the sprawl of Scottsdale...
Check the microphone, sit down, sorry.
Hello?
Hey, Joe.
Should I start?
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay, I'm fine, okay. I had the opportunity to live in the sprawl of Sacramento, I'm sorry, the sprawl of Scottsdale, Arizona, where they were developing that one acre per hour. I also lived in unincorporated Sacramento County in a town called Carmichael, where we had very, a very strong control over the kinds of building changes that went on in our community. It was the Carmichael Colony Community Association, not a community, not a homeowners association. But I saw what community support for maintaining the integrity of a real community looked like and I've taken both of those things into my retirement to Boulder City.
Sorry.
Oh, and I quickly, oh, I just wanted to say I am a treasurer and coordinator for our organization in Boulder City called Emergency Aid in Boulder City and it's really helped me understand the beauty of Boulder City and those things that I'd like to see changed.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Hi, I'm Kate Levin. I currently sit on the Boulder City Council. I was born and raised in Wyoming and graduated from the University of Wyoming. My courses study was social work. I moved to Las Vegas in 1970 because I wouldn't, although I love Wyoming, I wanted to get away from COVID there in Wyoming. I also have a master's degree from U of L. My courses study, as I said, was social work. I ran the Southern Nevada Children's Home in Boulder City. I started working there in 1974, so I have degrees in Boulder City and I moved there in 1984. When the children's home was closed due to budget constraints, I became a manager and a child even, even though social work may seem a far cry from politics, it's actually led itself to politics pretty well. I also was in management for twenty years in both these organizations. So I found that the skills that I had in management with respect to leadership, organization, making policies, procedure, budgeting has also served me well in my role as a city councilwoman.
Sorry.
I have, it's been an honor for me to serve the people of Boulder City as a councilwoman and I look forward to more people.
Testing, testing.
All right, hi, I'm James Howard Adams. I've been a resident of Boulder City for twenty-four years. My family moved there from Anaheim, Anaheim, California in 1995. I earned my degree in deaf studies from the College of Southern Nevada and professionally I work as a musician and a concert events promoter. I've actually, we've won a number of awards for our work with the band and just last year, Las Vegas Weekly named my partner, Sven Alina, and I, one of Southern Nevada's best music promoters in the area. So really proud of that work. As to why I'm here, I've always had an interest in politics ever since I was young. I think growing up in Boulder City had a lot to do with that. It's a very engaged, very active community. You can't grow up and not get involved, it's just, it's just part of it out there. Over the last several years, I've seen some things start to happen. We saw the demolition of a historic Six Companies Hospital, two more boarded up buildings in the historic district. You know, we saw plans to develop the Eldorado Valley and also to, valid question of chamber room control ordinance, which I just can't stand, so that's why I'm here running.
Hello, my name is Tom Tyler. I moved to Boulder City in 1991 to have my family grow up in a small town. I was raised in the military, I moved every two years of my life. I was a sergeant. My mom was a strict Catholic and my dad was a colonel. I didn't have hair longer than a cap wrench until I was a senior high school when they finally offered me. I went to UCR and I got a degree in plant science, but the town itself, I went into the regional clerks and I worked for Vons, Safeway and that and I feel I'm uniquely qualified for this position because I own stores, I own clothes stores, I know invoices, I manage stores and it's just like a small community. You have problems coming in that you have to deal with, you have problems with personnel, payroll, as well as loss prevention and that. Lately, our town is, hold on my culture, lately, our town is under a lot of stress from outside influences because people covet what we have. We have land, power and electricity that people want and I'm trying to save it for the citizens.
Hi, my name's Trenton Motley. I'm a twenty-one-year-old engineering student. I've lived in Boulder since I was born. Honestly, I don't really have a lot of qualifications for this, but maybe that makes me the best candidate for this, you know, get a new person in there. I really just want to see Boulder thrive and not just become another growing Henderson. I really like our small-town feel, growing up in it, it's just kind of been my thing and I'm in there because everyone else is taking up a lot of time and time is a very important thing, so we'll keep going.
Okay, candidates, thank you so much. So we're going to have the panelists ask you a question. You have eight minutes until it responds, so please make sure, I'll make sure that I give you ten seconds of warning and we'll cut off your sentence and then we'll move on to the next. So panelists, would you go ahead and ask your questions? Turn it down. Testing, one, two, testing, okay, you're good.
It's a good thing I'm nice. Sorry about that. Troy Warren, if you remember, a native of Southern Nevada too. I did a lot of partying up in Boulder City back in the 1990s. Love that little city. So my question to you all are, is, real fast, what is your major concern, the reason why, obviously you're running, but what is the major concern that you identify that you want to work on and how do you plan on fixing that? Because like I know there's some stuff with like the I-11 going around and businesses are losing, some of the infrastructure, some of the mainstays like the Southwest Center, Coffee Cup and stuff like that, so I'll do it, but some of the other stuff that require tourism, which I know part of that happens in there, is a problem as well. But what is the one particular thing that you identify that you think is an issue that needs to be repaired and how do you plan on repairing it?
Go ahead, let me start. I think like you said, the I-11 thing is a big deal. I worked at Chicken Chat, I don't know if anyone's heard of that. I worked there from when it started and they had a twenty percent loss in sales when I-11 opened up and I would like to get that twenty percent back and even more by maybe bringing in more events to Boulder City. We have a lot of like mountain bike races up at Bootleg, we have a lot of lake events, but I think we can have more. We have a lot of desert land that we can use, we have a lot of resources that we can use for events, so I'd like to bring in more events, bring in more revenues for tourism and see what we can do with that.
I want to keep Boulder City a bedroom community. We have almost thirty-five attractions that try to bring people into the town, as well as the dam, the lake, boating, zip lines, go-kart traps, parachuting. We have all this stuff, but we're forgetting about the community and I'm interested in the community. I don't think we need to attract people, we have a lot of things to do there. Our beautification projects, frankly, is destroying our downtown. Now we can't turn into any of our industries. We were asking about McDonald's and things like that. We've got, it's really strange, it's like the city's almost against business in town. But I want to, I'm for the community, you know, I want to see the schools do well and I want to see the nuclear conflicts not put us in a debt to the point where we can't live in the city. That's my goals.
I think one of the biggest things that we really have to focus on is historic preservation. Like I said earlier, we saw the old Six Companies Hospital demolished, that was a place that was put on the National Registry of Historic Places. We currently have two buildings in our downtown district that are boarded up and, you know, they currently have demolition permits pulled. We know that having strong, all the studies show that having strong historic preservation actually promotes economic development in commercial areas and it helps protect and raise property values in residential areas. I think if we don't focus on that, we're going to start to lose our identity. When people find out I come from Boulder City, what's the first thing they say? Oh, I love Boulder City. Our history is part of that identity, it's not just ours, it's this nation's, you know, the Hoover Dam redefined the southwest of America, you know, and we're part of that story, we're part of the nation's story and I think protecting that is going to be key to continuing to bring people into Boulder City, it's, it's part of what attracts people. So that would be my big thing is getting in better phones to enforce our historic preservation, to protect our history.
Well, my, my goals are similar to James. I think historic preservation and economic development tie in together. This is, the city just completed a five-year strategic plan, it was presented to the city council last week and for the first time in the city's history, there is a historic plan, historic preservation plan in place and an economic development plan in place. The city did not have the resources or the personnel in place to do this before and I also agree that it's essential in the long term for us to stay viable as a city. Additionally, we have Southern Nevada Railroad Museum that people would be surprised to know that forty thousand visitors a year come out to visit this small railroad that we have in Boulder City. And I'll be before the legislature next week lobbying to get funding for this museum to draw even more visitors to Boulder City.
Probably the two things I'm going to echo are economic development and historical preservation. We need strong enforceable codes and ordinances in our town to avoid historic, buildings that are protected under historic preservation, or who are deemed to be historic should not be easily torn down, even if they become private property. I also believe that the government should be encouraged to support and help businesses to stay open. Some of the reason that the boarded up buildings are boarded up is because of the fact that the owner of the business and the, and the city government could not come to certain agreements, there were conflicts, hospital was torn down because there were no consequences for the owner of that property to do so.
I would think, I guess my, I agree with the historic preservation and the doing something with the economic development, but I think the key to doing that is going to be getting more citizens involved, getting them to come forward to speak their minds, to give us ideas. We have very creative people in town and I think if we encourage them to come forward with some progressive ideas about how to accomplish these things, that will be our best way to get the community on a sound footing and our businesses going again. Thank you.
Thanks, Wade, so record him, yeah, candidates. Did you guys want to keep your small-town feel but grow some type of development? Would you be either for or against some type of marijuana growth facility and legal and disprivatization of marijuana and the usage of it?
Oh, that's a great question. I honestly don't know because I haven't thought about it because it is not legal in a city of Boulder as far as growing it or selling it. I'm not certain I'd be in favor of it, I think it would take a lot more people, I mean, police officers, social workers, whatever, to police, that it was only going to adults and people that legally were allowed to be using marijuana. So at this time, I don't know that we have the infrastructure to be able to police ourselves well enough to see that it only goes where it should be going.
I would tend to say no, only because Boulder City is either the only or one of the only cities in the state of Nevada that does not allow gambling.
It's the only one.
Only one, only city in the state of Nevada that does not allow gambling. And I think that to turn around and encourage the cannabis industry in Boulder City would be sort of contrary to that sense of who Boulder City is and I think there are enough business cities and industries right now in Boulder City. We are an energy city. We, we provide solar energy and we provide hydroelectric energy and I think that we are known for those particular things and that's what we should stick with.
This issue was studied before in Boulder City when the marijuana industry was just beginning and at that time, the city, I don't know if we passed an ordinance, but made a statement that we couldn't address it in Boulder City mainly because of all of the legal ramifications at that time. We have a city attorney, Las Vegas and Henderson have banks of attorneys, true that all of legal issues involved. The other thing is if people want access to marijuana, particularly medical marijuana, it's available to them right over the hill. We're not prohibiting anybody from using it in Boulder City, I just don't think that we should be involved in the production of it because it's stated there are so many legal ramifications that we aren't in a position to handle.
So yeah, about two years ago, after recreational marijuana passed, Boulder City did, because we did have a, essentially a no use, not for medical, you know, there's no medical dispensaries or anything like that, and then they updated that to also include recreational use in Boulder City. I can't say that I would support a dispensary or anything like that for recreational use. I do think medical use, it's an entirely different thing, you know, there is an opioid crisis going on and Boulder City's not immune to that. There are people with trouble and I think, you know, saying, oh, well, they can go over the hill to get their medicine is, you know, tell somebody that if they want to get their, you know, their medicine for their back pain, you know, well, you can't get it at the CVS here, so you're going to have to drive over the hill. That becomes problematic and it just creates a barrier to entry for that. That being said, like I said, I don't think we necessarily need to go, I don't know if it would be a huge boom to move towards growing or anything like that, but I do think that there's things that we could do to make it better for other people.
Our community has got more churches per cap than almost any community in the United States. We also have four, four Latter Day Saint wards and we have a community with children and it's a very small community. The marijuana industry, they deliver, so there's no problem in getting it there, all you got to do is phone them up, all you got to do is phone them, so I don't see the, even the need to bring it up. And all dispensaries are closer than twenty miles, they're not even allowed to grow in our town, so basically it's a new issue as far as I'm concerned.
Time to be repetitive? Yeah, I don't think I'm for growing it or selling it in Boulder City, but I don't have a problem with people using it, especially for medical reasons. I know it helps a lot of people and especially CBD oil helps a lot of people and I have no problem with them going over the hill, but I, I just don't think we have a big enough market even in Boulder for a dispenser even to want to open there. So I don't see that being a problem, but I'm all for people using it medically, it's totally understandable.
Lena Casio, my question is, everyone, the consensus here is everyone wants to preserve the historical sites in your town as well as have economic development, but I understand that there's certain city ordinances where you have to build so many houses up here, so how do you balance that? And, I mean, if you want economic development and you want businesses to come to Boulder City, maybe like an Amazon plant or something like that that's going to employ thousands of people, how do you balance that?
We currently have a growth ordinance right now and the last time that growth ordinance has been maxed out was in like the nineties because there's, it's a hundred and twenty permits at one time or in one year and we haven't really, no one's ever really wanted to get that many in one town anyway. As far as the big businesses like an Amazon plant or anything like that, I think that's gonna, even just one is gonna start snowballing into many and it'll kind of just start turning this into an industrial city and I'm not really for that. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of big places in Vegas and a lot of people who live out in Boulder really don't mind taking that drive for the Boulder City feel, so the balance, I think, would just stick with our current growth ordinance and I guess we're in there.
Thank you all for coming today. John, go forward, Madison.
Wait, they all have the answer.
Okay, give me, give me Liz, what you're in about. Your question was, your question real quick? How to keep the balance?
How do you balance, you know, preserving your historical, you know, sites, but you want economic development in your, in your town, how do you balance that with the city ordinances that are in place?
I'm the president of RCE and I've been that way for a couple of years now and I have the pulse of the town and as much as they stress historical, it's already, it's already protected. They want to put the whole town under the coverage of it and it's getting a little taxing. I mean, there again, we're a community and we should be for the community and the people in the community. We're raising children and we're a veteran community and a retirement community and everybody wants to make us something other than that and I think that the citizens want to be a better community.
So we currently lease, a third of our budget comes from solar leases that we have out there in the Eldorado Valley, so it's like twelve, ten million dollars I think a year that we get from that. We're going to have more solar leases coming online. I don't necessarily know that we have a need for a big giant distribution center or something like that out there, especially when we're leased, we're able to lease this land and we're able to retain it should anything happen. I think with California, you know, they want us to go completely renewable by 2050, so, you know, unless there's, you know, huge changes in technology or a big economic thing, I think solar is really a way to go for us. Like I said, it's a third of our budget and we're only going to start getting more when we're moving in that way, so the economic development is there in that regards and maintaining our historic preservation or maintaining that will help keep that economic development on that side for the city, should anything happen on there, we'll still have a strong core which is at the heart of the city, so.
Well, I'm really glad to ask that question so we can clarify, or I can clarify. The reason I think economic development and historic preservation would go hand in hand is not to attract big businesses, but it's to help our small businesses in Boulder City right now and to attract more small businesses. I have been to many historic towns where the downtown center, the historic buildings have been re, re, rehaved or renovated and they make charming businesses and they're usable buildings, but they're restored buildings. And as Ben said, we have two buildings that are boarded up in Boulder City that are historic buildings. Wouldn't it be nice to have a use for them, you can have a business and that they can be part of that wonderful charming unique downtown that we have? So that's, I think, history lends itself to the customers that we're trying to get in Boulder City.
Yes, I'm going to reiterate pretty much what everybody else has said. It's pretty clear that most of the population of Boulder City does not want that kind of growth. We've only grown point seven seven percent a year for the last nineteen, eighteen years. Where our open lands are being successfully used as for recreation and for solar energy creation. We have some new housing available for people and it's really shoring up the economic development of the existing small businesses in Boulder City and encouraging tourism to come up to Boulder City, come for a day, a weekend, a week and have successful thriving businesses and therefore business owners and families in the community get that to enjoy the success of the town.
Bro, bro, get on the court.
I don't have to agree with everyone else on this. I don't, although we have the land and space where an Amazon or something like that might want to build something out there and do it, but we have all kinds of, we have citizens for, you know, to employ there, but they also, people coming from Henderson or Vegas, whether people come out to Boulder City to work or people from Boulder City go into in the other direction to work. I don't think the fact, the size of the city for the homes, you know, the number of homes and living spaces is a big issue as to whether or not somebody for economic development, for something big like that. A second grocery store, we'd have to grow a lot bigger to be able to afford that, as well as you'd have to have somebody that has the deep pockets to set up something like that, a grocery store or anything else. These big things take a lot of money, so you have to have people with deep pockets that want to invest in the community and from what I read in the papers, most of those deep pockets only want to invest in the community if the community gives something back and that's not always the best way to get growth as such, so thank you.
Once again, thank you all for being here. So I hear each of you, or the consensus seems to be that you want to keep Boulder City a bedroom community, a small community, you don't want large growth there as far as folks moving in or large businesses. So my, and my question is with the, the age, as you said, retirement community, sooner or later, people are just going to, attrition's going to take over. You're gonna, you haven't grown for X number of years in any significant way, sooner or later, you're not going to have any residents or there's going to be such a small amount.
amount. Because why would, as a young person being born now, why would I stay in Boulder City when everything is over the hill if Boulder City's gonna continue to not want to attract big business or grow? Why would I stay there? What, what type of plan do you have to combat the attritions?
Normally speaking, we don't have, we have enough homes for sale that people want to buy and move into Boulder City. A lot of our younger people, they grew up in Boulder City, they moved to Henderson, Vegas, or even out of state in some cases. As they mature, they realize how much nicer Boulder City is to raise a family and they are looking for homes to move back. We have a lot of them that were there, grew up there, moved away for maybe sometimes 10, 20 years and gravitated back. So I'm not worried about it drying up and blowing away. And we do, it's just not gonna happen, not, not as long as we maintain the way we are now. We want growth, but we do not want something huge to take us over so that you can acclimatize to it.
Last time I heard, there were fewer than 100 homes available for sale and a little over a half a dozen apartments for rent in all of Boulder City. Property values stay, stay high. You don't drive up and down the streets and see lots of for sale signs. There is a sort of organic growth that goes on where there's attrition, but then you have people coming back and moving in with families. I see Boulder City as an aspirational community, not necessarily a place where the first young family comes to start their family, but certainly a place that people aspire to move to, that when they can afford it, they're gonna buy a house in Boulder City. I've had people, we have a park across the street from us, and I've had people say, gee, I wish I could afford to live here. That doesn't sound like a place that's going to dry up and blow away. That sounds like a place there's gonna be wait lists for people to come move if there's availability.
Thank you. Our controlled growth ordinance is that it's controlled growth, but not no growth. And it is true that our community with respect to population has grown very little over the last couple of decades. But we have, in the last year, had some growth. We had a trailer park that was purchased and replaced with cottages that are called our little town halls. And we have, for the first time in, I have 20 or 30 years, a new development of homes being built in Boulder City. And there along, and it's only 30 homes per year. So over a period of three years, they've allowed that development. We are a family community as well. My, I have three girls, sons living in Boulder City, raising their children in Boulder City. So it is a place that you have to want to be in. But I do think it is a problem that for a lot of people who want to live in Boulder City and raise kids there, that we need to look into the future of how we can provide some kind of affordable housing.
So as one of the few young people living in Boulder City? No, there's, there's a good number of us actually. And we choose to live there because of the very reason that you described, it's because it doesn't have those big giant businesses, it's not downtown Las Vegas, it's not, you know, these sprawling things. That's part of what we love about it, you know. It is our community. Growing up, you know, you see the same cashiers behind the counter, you know, for the last 15, 20 years that you've been living there. And we love that. It's, it's something that's unique and, you know, all the wanton growth and development in, you know, throughout Clark County for the last 30 years, that hasn't done anything. There's still affordability issues and availability issues for young families. I have a friend who just had a child and he ended up turning down a promotion that was gonna be moving across the state, up in the northern part. He turned that down because, no, we were going to raise our kid in Boulder City, it was that important to them. So I don't really see it being a problem. I know it often does seem like it, but I don't see it that way.
You know, I moved in Boulder City in 1991 with my family. Both my kids graduated from good schools, they got scholarships. One went to Loyola Marymount, the other one got a scholarship at Dartmouth. So it's a very nice town to raise your kids in. Both my kids live in there and they're raising their children. So I want to maintain the community for my grandkids. I'm very interested in a lot of things and Boulder invest in its own youth. Emergency aid, we help with rents, we help with mortgages and stuff, just so that we can maintain our generations, the second, third generation people there. We wanna, we wanna maintain the community and we try as hard as we can to do that and people know that. So people want to move there.
Young kid here. This is gonna be a minus one for me, but I have moved out of my mom's house. Still there. Working two jobs, I probably can't afford to buy my own house in Boulder City right now. And with school and everything else, I'm pretty busy. The cottages Peggy talked about claim to have been affordable housing when they were trying to be built. And now that they're built, they're not really affordable housing. And so I would really like to see some of these companies bring in actual affordable housing that I could maybe look into buying. They don't have to be two-story, three-bedroom, three-bath houses, you know, that's not where I'm wanting to start, but that's where I would like to end up.
Okay, candidates, we really appreciate that. So we're just gonna give, we're gonna go down the way here, start, you get a minute to say why somebody would like to vote for you. So you get a minute and all the time, they'll give you a 10 second and then cut it off after that, correct?
Got it. I'm different. I'm not your usual candidate for city council. I've been here my whole life, I know everyone in Boulder City. Maybe not everyone, but it's a hard point to reach. But I'd like to know everybody and I'd like to represent everybody in Boulder City. So, but that being said, this is our town and I'd like to be your council member.
Time for the community. I want a good place for my family to grow up in and for my grandkids to have the intention to stay there. I believe that we're lost, we're focused and that the incumbents in that have need to change, so that we can move on. That's my whole opinion.
Yeah, I'm running for city council not because I think I have, you know, all the great ideas or I know what's best for the city, but because I believe that those answers can be found within the community. You know, my job is not to represent myself, but to represent the people. I think it's the citizens' rights to determine the direction that the city is going to go. And I think oftentimes many people feel that the council and the staff, they are not listening. I think my, my work in the music community, representing and promoting and booking bands from all over, showing, showcasing Vegas and Southern Nevada area, studies in the deaf community, when I was going through school, I think they all offer me a very unique experience and understanding of the importance of community and having a strong and balanced one. And so that's why I'm running for Boulder City.
Well, I'm very optimistic about the future of Boulder City. I, I'm pleased with the direction and momentum that we have going in Boulder City right now. In the past year, we've pretty much replaced the leadership team at Boulder City. And I'm happy with the fact that we have a strategic plan that I'm on board with, like I mentioned earlier, that economic development. Historic preservation are part of that plan. I think it's important that as a candidate and as a councilwoman, that you represent all the voices in Boulder City. And I've had to make tough decisions in the past and I've always been my decision is based on, I feel for Boulder City. I also serve on several regional boards and cities and I think that has also helped me in relation to my job to Boulder City because I can draw the expertise and the knowledge of other community leaders and I believe that has benefited Boulder City. So I will continue to work hard for all of us.
I feel I'm a strong candidate for Boulder City City Council because I have an academic background in finance and marketing, because I sat on academic councils, I understand policy and policy development and implementation. I'm listening well and I learn my lessons quickly. And also I have a vision of Boulder City in terms of the town I thought I was moving to and there are things I think we can do a lot better. And finally, I work and am the treasurer and coordinator and emergency aid along the town. And I have an ability to see the most incredible human being behavior and, and in terms of donations and volunteerism. And I also have a backside view of some of the things that are going wrong in our town that need to be helped.
I think I am the best candidate for the town because I have been involved in attending meetings, learning what people, what the current council says in those meetings and what they propose, as well as listening to what the staff has proposed and brought out. I also, and then I listen to the people that are in the community that maybe don't go to those meetings, a lot of them don't because they don't think anybody listens to them. And so we have a great deal of distrust of the current council as well as some of the city staff. And I think I would be the best person to listen and talk to those peoples and get that turned around. I really like openness. I think the citizens should know what's going on and they need to know ahead of time. So I think we need to do a much better job in town of getting the word out. Thank you.
So thank you again, candidates, for being out here. This will be concluding our Veterans in Politics municipal endorsement interviews in 2019 for the Boulder City. I believe there's two seats that are up for bid right now. We want to again, thank you for being here. We want to thank our sponsors Fire Rock Steakhouse and Bar and Gaming, Real Water, and Michael Broadway Real Estate. So again, give them a round of applause.